The Tuesday, January nineteenth meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to
Order, I'll rise with the pledge allegiance.
With the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council on issues related to Eden Prairie City Government. The portion of the meeting that's reserved for open podium is from approximately six thirty to six fifty-five, and it's in the council chambers here. If you wish to address the council at that time, please call the city manager's office. By noon of the meeting date, the number for the city manager's office is nine four nine eight four one two. Please leave your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If there are no scheduled speakers, or if we have extra time after scheduled speakers, we have an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. The first item on our meeting agenda tonight is a proclamation regarding Martin Luther King Jr., and, you know what, I don't have that.
That was the, uh...
I'm sorry.
...of our Human Rights and Diversity Commission.
No, she meant the proclamation.
No, I don't have the copy of the proclamation.
Oh, but you can pull it up here to read it. We don't have a paper copy, so...
Okay. Our administrative assistant usually has that for me.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Whereas the City of Eden Prairie City Council and Human Rights and Diversity Commission sponsors a human rights award program, recognizing those who work to create an inclusive community spirit through their actions, activities, and programs; and whereas the City of Eden Prairie recognizes that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. had a dream and dedicated his life to helping freedom exist for all people through his commitment to human rights and his nonviolent philosophy; and whereas the City of Eden Prairie reaffirms its commitment to fostering diversity in our community through the Eden Prairie Manifesto, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Eden Prairie hereby proclaim 2016 as a year to celebrate human rights and diversity, and asks all residents to continue their commitment and concern for equal rights for all persons, to dedicate themselves to helping those who do not yet share in that freedom, and to join the City of Eden Prairie in recognizing and celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream. And we have tonight, Mr. P.G. Norrion. I always have trouble saying your name, I'm sorry, I thought that was close, who is the Chair of our Human Rights and Diversity Commission. He's going to announce the opening of an application process for a human rights award. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, and you did pronounce that perfectly.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Council members, good evening. My name is P.G. Norrion, and I am the chairperson for the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. It is my pleasure to announce the start of human rights award process for 2016. The goal of the human rights award is to recognize Eden Prairie individuals, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and youth who have worked to create an inclusive community, community spirit through action, activities, and program. There are many talented groups and individuals in this community, and the HRDC is proud to be able to recognize outstanding citizens who embody the Eden Prairie Human Rights Manifesto. Nomination will be taken until February twenty-ninth. The commissioners will review and select award recipient at our meeting on March tenth, and the award will be presented at the council meeting in April. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. And there's information on the council website, or the city website regarding the award. Thank you very much. The next item is a nice donation from the Eden Prairie Smiles Dental Group. Mr. Lothammer.
Yes, Your Honor, council members. Our first donation tonight is from Eden Prairie Smiles for $5,000, and this generous donation helps us with many of our summer programs like Arts in the Park, our Hometown Celebration on the third and fourth of July, the Starring Concert Series, Kid Stock Concert Series, and also Halloween on the Mall. So we really appreciate that. Tonight with us is Dr. Mesa, and this is an ongoing annual donation from Eden Prairie Smiles, so we really want to thank them and appreciate them for all that they do to help make these even better events.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Mesa, so much for this donation. A lot of these things wouldn't happen and, or wouldn't be as successful, as wonderful celebrations as they are if we didn't get donations from businesses within our community. So thank you very much, we greatly appreciate it. Is there a motion to accept this donation?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation from Eden Prairie Smiles for $5,000 for Parks and Recreation Special Events.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. The next item is a donation from the Lioness Club.
Yes, this is a donation for $600 from the Lioness Club. The intent of this donation is to help with the sound equipment at the Senior Center.
Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $600 from the Eden Prairie Lioness Club for the purchase of new sound equipment at the Eden Prairie Senior Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion passes. Again, thanks to the Lionesses. I think that they make a donation to us pretty much every year.
These are somewhat annual donations tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. And the last one is a donation, a State Farm donation, from Gordon Williams.
Yes, through his volunteer service, State Farm donations, or donates $500 towards the Senior Center. He wishes for this to go towards the volunteer lunch that happens at the Senior Center to recognize the volunteers, and again, this is a pretty annual and ongoing donation from Mr. Williams, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I think this has been happening since before you joined the city.
I'll have to check, it's been quite a long time.
It's been a long time, okay. Thank you, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $500 from State Farm Company's Foundation on behalf of Gordon Williams for his volunteer service at the Eden Prairie Senior Center to be used toward the 2016 Senior Center Volunteer Recognition Event.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. So again, thank you to Eden Prairie Smiles, Dr. Mesa, Eden Prairie Lioness, and State Farm, and Gordon Williams for these great donations. Greatly, greatly appreciate it, thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add or delete? Okay, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held Tuesday, January fifth?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to question or correct? All in favor?
Aye.
I need to abstain as I was not at the meeting.
Okay. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held the same night?
So move.
Second.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent calendars, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval of items A through G on the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion on any of those items? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now at one of our three public hearings, and it's for Cal Point. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Madam Council. Tonight you have a request from Cal Point for a planned unit development district with waivers and a zoning district change from neighborhood commercial to community commercial on 2.9 acres. Three parcels, three lots, that are being combined into two on 13105, 13075, and 13045 Pioneer Trail. The project before you tonight is for the construction of a 20,000-square-foot grocery building with a drive-thru, and then another multi-tenant retail building of approximately 4,200 square feet. The proposal includes the removal of existing structures that are at those addresses and redeveloping the existing three parcels into two parcels with shared parking facilities. As I mentioned, the proponent is seeking a rezoning from neighborhood commercial to community commercial, and there are two waivers. One is for a parking setback along the common property line, and the other is a very small waiver for floor area ratio and base area ratio. The plan commission unanimously recommended approval of this project. Tonight, we have with us the project proponents that are here to provide an overview of the project, and staff or the project proponents can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Calvin Paddy, so I'm the applicant. Today I am available here to explain the project description, and along with my civil specialist. Unfortunately, our architect is not present today due to, I think, illness or what reasons, whatnot. I apologize for that, but certainly we are here to answer any questions you have or take it forward by working offline. So, so as he just explained, it is going to be two buildings proposed. The first building, we kind of requested for two phases for this project. So being the first phase, the ground-up construction of 20,000 square footage, and that is, that is requested for neighborhood grocery store project for us, and the goal of the project is to give the best shopping experience in the neighborhood by proposing the quality regular groceries and the meats. So the store would consist of primarily the groceries and along with its meat shops. So one corner of the building, we are dedicating more for the meats, and the drive-thru is technically open only just for the meats, but not for the groceries, you know, and then the other part of the building, within the 20,000 square footage, would be more dedicated for the groceries. So, so that's the project proposed with the hundred parking slots on the Phase One build-out project. And subsequently, we have also requested for the Phase Two build-out of 4,200 square footage. So that would be eventually going to be happening. Wait after we initially build out the first-phase building, and then we sustain for about five, six months, and down the road, the plan is to go for the second building construction, so... And other than that, we also asked for the, we have also mentioned the truck deliveries, and all of that would take place from early morning, 5:30 to 7:00 a.m. every Thursdays and Fridays of the week to support the grocery operations. And other than that... In the Phase Two building, we've kind of requested for it to be multi-retail shops, and then that's more of 4,200 square footage built out with 21 parking stalls per city recommendation, so... I think that's all for now, probably you can ask some questions you have.
Thank you. I do have some questions. Is there a name for this?
We shortlisted like three, four, but for now we're going by Cal Point.
Okay. And this is not necessarily a question for you, but maybe for staff. Often when we get these proposals, we get some indication of signage, and I didn't see signage addressed on any of this.
Your Honor, council members, we do often see signage with the PUD. However, we never approve it with the PUD. We actually require them to come back through sign permit. So sometimes what you'll see is confusing because it doesn't necessarily meet code. So we don't encourage them to put the signage on at this point, but you can imagine it will break up the facade a little bit when they do add the signage, and we'll make sure that that's in conformance with code or goes through the proper process.
Okay. Second question, this is in two phases, and I hope that you're able to do Phase Two when you're planning to, but right now that's, this is being replanted from three lots into two lots, and I assume one of those lots is that site for the smaller retail building. What happens when we're doing a waiver for side, setback for parking because we're assuming that it's going to abut the parking for this other building? What if this gentleman doesn't end up developing this, ends up selling that parcel to somebody else, and there's a different use, then what happens?
The waiver for the setback would still be in place, so that next potential user would have to understand that the parking would be that close to their property.
Okay, all right. And then the last question is for you, and that is, did I hear you say that the drive-thru is only for meats?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Is, is there a model for that someplace?
Yeah.
In the Twin Cities, I've never heard of that.
You've never seen that, probably.
I've never seen that.
This, I have a first concept I personally have interest in because I have studied the retail market very well in the last 12 months, and in fact, I put myself to be the customer. Most of the time when I get to buy meats, I always spend a lot of time in going in and then selecting, and it's same old shopping every day, every week we do, but we put some brain into it, and then thought, why don't we introduce... We're going to have two concepts, basically. One for the retailers who kind of knows their meats on a regular basis, they want to buy, but they don't want to waste time, rather just simply order online and then pick up from the store. That's the main objective of introducing the drive-thru model. And number two, we also have a second line of customers who always think that they know they want to buy something, and then we are introducing through an app. So you can make an order through an app and just get it out from the store by driving up, rather than, especially in the cold winter season, so think about just for one or two products, you know, why do you want to spend time all the way going to the stores? And then, so that's the, that's the model behind it, and then, in fact, we, we kind of studied this project well in advance, I think we spent more than 12 months. So I'm sure it's going to, it's going to work out very well for our customers, and especially the meats, you know? So, that's behind it, nothing else, yeah.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for the proponent?
Just quickly, the, the drive-thru traffic competes with the truck delivery traffic, right?
Actually, not really, if you are, because in the past, we discussed about that point. I think Julie and Tim proposed, can you show us some flexibility around and not, not overlap each other or maybe create hurdles around there? So the drive-throughs part, the, the location of drive-through versus the truck delivery happens a little bit, there is a gap in between, basically, if you look at the...
But the same road, the same going around the building to get to both.
Exactly.
In that sense, I mean, I understand they're not, they're on the, they're on different sides of the building, I get that, but still, and I don't know how many cars will be going through your drive-thru, nor how many truck deliveries, and a lot of truck deliveries are at night, I guess, and whatever.
I don't think we have that because, yeah, that's a good point. In the past, we've discussed about that. Most of our truck deliveries happen early in the morning, so there's no way we can, we can get to see an overlap situation in the nights, especially in the peak times, and our store operates in our regular times versus the drive-throughs. The truck deliveries happen in a different time, so I'm sure we should be fine with that, you know? And especially the drive-throughs are only for meats and not for regular, every customer to, so...
And then just a question of staff. This building, it has a setback of 35 feet from that, let me get the directions right here. Eastern side? And the existing building, by this drawing, looks like it's an old, maybe grandfathered-in setback?
That is likely the case. That is an older building, and it's more of industrial warehouse type of facility, so it's not necessarily adhering to that community commercial setback.
But I thought community commercial was more intense of a zone than warehouse district, no? So you're saying warehouse district has lesser standards?
Well, again, it's, it's been there a while. It probably doesn't conform to a lot of our current standards for either industrial or for community commercial, or...
So if that property came in for redevelopment, obviously we would subject it to new standards, and likely there would not be two buildings that close to each other, because that, I, I mean, just based if this is anywhere to scale, we're talking buildings that are probably 50 to 60 feet separated, yeah? Which again, it...
Approximately 60 feet, I would say, yes.
Yeah, and not, not that that's a concern that we want to place upon this, this new developer owner, but typically in Eden Prairie, we, we don't have buildings like that where crime could maybe fester or where there's closed-in areas for people to hang out at night, you know? That would be my only concern, that we typically have not seen this kind of, I don't think, maybe Janet helped me, but it just, it just feels a little bit like a corridor that we haven't typically had in our city, but maybe they're all over and I just don't hang out there at night, so...
There would be visibility of that area from Pioneer Trail. You can see that, you can kind of get some visibility through there as you drive around. So I don't think it's really that hidden of an area for crime or whatnot, but perhaps...
And then even though this addresses our exterior brick and glass and all that ordinance, do we typically not worry as much about the cosmetic look of the backs of our buildings? I really have not taken a tour of the, you know, the back of any building that's a large, big box section, except to notice sometimes at the mall that they're brick. But are we, is this very consistent with the backside of many of our larger box buildings across the city?
It is very consistent that we would have much less articulation on the backside and the less visible side.
And that back is going to be facing that other building, so it's not like it's going to have sightlines to the back of that building.
The other building, I'm not as worried about. It's more the public and driving up Pioneer Trail. The public would see it, driving up Pioneer Trail, but only parts of it for a short amount of time.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I was just going to say, this is sort of another one of those issues where you've got two fronts, you know, on a busier street, and then on the street there were people come up that we've discussed before, and we still haven't come to any policy if there's going to be any changes between buildings with sort of the two-frenched sides. And I think that is something that needs to be looked into in the next year or two, where if we're going to have any different requirements with the two-sided building, we need to look at that, we can't do it case by case right now.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Sure, thanks, Lot.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this? Okay, questions for staff?
Do we want to close?
Sure, if you'd like to, go ahead.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, questions for staff? Mr. Amaya, this particular parcel has a fair number of residences across the street from it, on the north side.
Kitty corner, probably, right?
Somebody's shaking their head.
On the north side, yeah.
Yeah, on the north side, there's at least a single-family residence, and there's a senior residence, and then there's some other residences. Could you address the lighting situation on this property to give me some comfort level that there's not going to be a lot of spillage into the residential areas?
Yes, but we will check that there isn't lighting spill over because we do have ordinances that control that and that require the source of the lighting to be covered, so that you're not looking at basically the bulb or the LED fixture. So, you know, that is a level of detail that I can't tell you exactly what the lighting levels are at the property line, but I know that we do review that and ensure that it meets code.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Only that, and I hesitate to micromanage on the cosmetic piece of it, but we've been consistent sometimes on color variations on residential townhomes, and we've, you know, of course, back in the 90s, we had Home Depot change two or three of their audience to beige, tan, rather than the orange. So we've, we have some flexibility, I think, to ensure that this is as beautiful as it can be, or tweak it to become, you know, possibly significantly better without a great additional cost, especially if they're coming and meeting code. And that's the only thing I would raise right now, and maybe appreciate a staff response, that have you looked at this in terms of what could we do to dress it up, to make it look a little bit sharper, to, you know, really, potentially, that corner needs to help, and this could be the beginning of doing something if we do it right.
Yes, Your Honor, council member, case, there have been quite a few discussions with the proponent and the architect, and it was also discussed at Planning Commission. Of course, we have an architect now on the Planning Commission, and we really do feel that the level of articulation is above and beyond the code and consistent with the consensus that we've been hearing from the council when we discuss the, the design standards and the architecture that we'd like to see in the community. It's come a long way. There have been many enhancements since the first run, I guess, when they first came in, so we appreciate they've been working with us since September to improve the facades, and it has added costs, undoubtedly. And we're, you know, dealing with a situation here where they're needing to obviously secure their financing, and I think that staff feels comfortable that they have done what we think is reasonable in this situation, this area of town, the amount of visibility and what's going on in the surrounding area, that they've really stepped up and that this will be a big improvement for the city.
Is this also the landscape plan? I haven't seen the...
Yeah, the last page.
The last page. There are some pictures on the...
Of this one.
So we do have the landscape one in here, obviously. I'd seen the pictures, okay. So they do have the ads and... Okay, thanks.
What's interesting, speaking of that, the last page of the, I don't know what it's called, there's, we have three documents here, but the very last page of the black-and-white diagram shows even more variation than what the color one does, which I'm impressed with. In other words, there's a lot seemingly different shades of brick or...
Yeah.
Something, it's this one. So whereas this somehow got to this where everything became the same, and some of the other earlier drawings, maybe it looks like that's not. So that's all I'm encouraging staff. I don't, I don't think there's any more costs if you, I'm, I'm not an architect, so I'm not micromanaging here. I'm suggesting to make sure staff did truly look at this, but changing brick color or doing something that's a variation across this facade that doesn't end up just looking all the same.
Yeah, they, they just made these parts darker.
I know, and even that changed it more positively to me. You know, it's like, I just want staff to give one more, I'll approve it tonight. And, and, you know, just before a second reading, just give a little more stab at something that won't add cost, but still could add enhanced, you know, beauty to the project.
So it doesn't look like a long, straight wall.
Your Honor, council members, there are two different face brick colors. I think on the color drawing, the two different browns maybe look a little bit more similar than intended, so you're not seeing that the base is actually a lighter brown, and there's some horizontal banding in some of what feel like the column features. And it's very subtle on the color drawing. We'll encourage them to make that a little bit more dramatic. It's probably just that you don't have as many selections on whatever program they used, is my guess.
But you're hearing what we're saying, so just to make sure staff...
We are, we are.
Here's that, great.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, if I can find it here. So I would move to adopt the resolution for guide plan change from neighborhood commercial to community commercial on 2.98 acres. Adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 2.98 acres, and approve first reading... and approve first reading of the ordinance for plan unit development district reviews with waivers, and zoning district change from neighborhood commercial to community commercial on 2.98 acres, and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat, for three lots into two lots on 2.98 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions or concerns that we've expressed this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Next item is the franchise agreement with Quest Broadband Services.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and city council. You may recall, last year, you conducted a public hearing to consider a competitive franchise, cable franchise agreement with CenturyLink. We currently have Comcast operating cable TV services in our city, and CenturyLink has approached the Southwest Cable Commission for Eden Prairie to grant a franchise agreement as well. We, along with the cities of Edina, Richfield, Minnetonka, and Hopkins, are members of this commission, and you will see in the packet that the commission voted at their October meeting unanimously to recommend that each member, all the member cities, approve a franchise with CenturyLink. So this evening, we have the Southwest Cable Commission's administrator and legal counsel, Brian Grogan, to lead us through this proposal. And then we ask that you consider approval of a first reading of an ordinance granting CenturyLink a franchise to operate cable TV services in Eden Prairie.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Again, for the record, my name's Brian Grogan. I'm an attorney with the Minneapolis Law Firm of Moss and Barnett, here tonight representing the commission, therefore indirectly representing the city. I'd like to clarify that at the front, because sometimes I get confused that I am somehow affiliated with the cable company. They have a representative here this evening, gentleman named Patrick Haggerty, who certainly can speak on behalf of CenturyLink, questions you may have of the company. So I'm going to work off of a PowerPoint tonight and try to move through quickly for you. Certainly would stand for questions after I completed this. If you'd like to interrupt me at any point, happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to review briefly how we get to this point. You know, one of the provisions of federal law is to promote competition in the delivery of cable television services. And we're not to essentially deny a competitive operator the right to provide service to the extent they possess the requisite legal, technical, financial qualifications. And to that end, federal law essentially states that a city or a franchising authority, in this case, the city of Eden Prairie, will not unreasonably refuse to award a competitive cable franchise. So your standard review tonight is one of reasonableness as you consider this franchise. Just to take you back a little bit in history, many of the council members were here back in 2012 when we renewed Comcast cable franchise. The commission had come up with a recommendation, and this city adopted that. We started with that contract as the base document for these negotiations. We literally photocopied the Comcast franchise, handed it to CenturyLink, and said, "This is the document we want you to sign." And from there, we agreed on certain changes that were necessary for CenturyLink to be able to agree to that. But the goal was, we wanted two contracts that were nearly identical or as close as possible so that the two companies could compete in the marketplace for customers. City could stay out of that competition. The subscriber, the residents, can decide who they want to buy cable services from or whether they choose to buy it from a satellite company or another competitor. So that is, in essence, how we approached the negotiations. The negotiations occurred at the commission level with participation from, of course, all the managers and commission representatives. We held negotiations through the summer months, and in late October, as your city manager mentioned, the commission unanimously approved the document that's before you this evening. I want to go through briefly just a few of the differences between the documents, between the Comcast and the CenturyLink. Comcast, we refer to households, a phrase we're all familiar with in the city business. In the CenturyLink document, we refer to living units, which is essentially all your households, plus all your business addresses, and really any unique address in the Quest database, the old Quest Communications database, which CenturyLink, of course, acquired. So we have living units, and then to be able to receive their cable television product, which they refer to as Prism, Comcast refers to it as Xfinity, their branding name is Prism. If you want to be able to get Prism, you have to be a qualified living unit. And what that means is you have to have sufficient speed of about 25 megabit speed download in order to receive the video signal, because they deliver their signal through an internet protocol or IP basis, whereas Comcast delivers it through a hybrid coax fiber basis. Both are fine, both have their advantages and disadvantages. This just happens to be the way in which CenturyLink is going to deliver their service. So we did a few things unique here, though, as relates to the comparison to Comcast. Comcast, you might recall, we granted a 10-year franchise term. So it runs from approximately late 2012 through 2022. CenturyLink, we're proposing this evening a five-year franchise term. It's a five-year term with the unilateral right on behalf of the city to extend it for another five years. So CenturyLink can't pull that trigger to extend it, but you can if you're satisfied after the first five years that they've met the mark and complied with the franchise. And really, we tie that in large part to their build-out proposal. State law says that they have to build out and substantially complete build-out within five years. There's some dispute between Comcast and CenturyLink as to whether state law governs their build-out or whether federal law governs the build-out. In negotiating, we simply tied this to the franchise term so that the city council, the commission's recommendation, can reassess this in five years' time and determine whether they've met the mark. If they haven't, we go back into renewal with CenturyLink and determine whether to continue to allow them to provide service. Or if we're satisfied, then we can avoid having to renegotiate and just pull the trigger and have another five-year extension. So we hope that's the best of both worlds for the city. This looks like a complicated slide. It is a little complicated. I'm going to try to make it simple. Build-out for CenturyLink is based on where they, in large part, have existing facilities already. For, from a contractual standpoint, they are obligated to provide service to at least 15 percent, and I want to be clear, that's 1.5 percent of the city's living units, think of that as households, within the first two years. That does not sound like much, and I'm sure that's not very impressive as you listen to that. That is a baseline term that is contained in every CenturyLink franchise, from Seattle to Portland to Denver to Minneapolis to St. Paul and many cities in between. That is the baseline provision that they put in because it's the minimum that they will agree to provide. We know that for Eden Prairie, that number is already, as we sit here today, substantially in excess of that. They want to preserve that as a trade secret. They've provided maps that we've been able to look at, that your city manager has been able to look at, and we know that they are, as best I can say, substantially in excess of that. Now, why do we take comfort in the fact that a franchise doesn't reflect what reality is on the map? It's because we're going to verify that through quarterly meetings that are going to occur beginning three months from the effective date of this franchise. CenturyLink is required by this contract to come back in and present updated maps every three months until they complete construction to demonstrate to your manager, to the commission, to whomever we want to have present in the room, and any council members outside of a quorum, of course, that want to sit in on that meeting, to be able to view their trade secret maps, verify exactly where they're providing service, who's eligible to receive the service, and that they are otherwise complying with the build-out obligations of the franchise. There's some competitive trade secret reasons why they don't want to make that information public. Of course, they're in competition with Comcast, and Comcast has confidential information as well. So we're trying to honor the requests of these companies. But we feel confident that with that type of verification, ultimately, they'll be able to meet the requirements of the franchise. And we've built in what's known as a marketplace incentive provision. And I'll use the example I've provided in this slide. Let's assume that at an upcoming quarterly meeting, CenturyLink demonstrates that they are capable of serving 60 percent of the households or living units within the city, and that they actually have sold service to 30 percent of those 60 percent. So again, picture the city, picture 60 percent being available to have the Prism product, and of that amount, 30 percent choose to buy it. The obligations of the franchise then contractually bind CenturyLink to build another 15 percent on top of what they already have, which in this example would push them to 75 percent, and it goes forward. Think of it this way: if nobody buys their product and the business plan is a complete failure, then they are not going to be obligated to build out as aggressively. If, however, they reach what we think are reasonable and approachable business goals through this marketplace success plan, then they will be required to complete construction. We have the additional check and balance of that five-year review. And all of this was really teed up by an FCC review about how best to address competitive overbuilds in the marketplace. So with all that said, we feel as though we've really selected the best and most aggressive provisions to address build-out that we've seen in any CenturyLink franchise around the country. Couple of other differences I want to note in the franchise. CenturyLink uses something called a mosaic channel. And the best way to show this is to just look at a picture of it. What they offer is a channel that looks like this, that will offer a variety of public educational governmental signals so that a subscriber can look at this screen, click on one of these boxes, and it will immediately be taken to a large screen of the full channel that's being offered. In almost every community in the Twin Cities market, this is exactly how peg is being delivered, frankly, in the CenturyLink model nationwide. In our particular case, it's going to be channel 26 on your channel lineup that will look like this mosaic. That will then take you up to channel 8,000, and that sounds high, I understand, but that's where all the peg channels in the entire Twin Cities market will be located. So you'll be able to have the benefit of watching, you know, football games from Maple Grove, council meetings from Woodbury, you name it. You can, you'll have available as a customer all of those different options. The unique thing that we've done for Eden Prairie, though, is with this mosaic channel, didn't fit perfectly for the Southwest Commission, because we have five different government channels. Who would be the large screen on this mosaic? The commission was very adamant that it not be the public access channel and then not be the educational access channel. So what we're going to have is this mosaic channel will be shared by the public and educational channel. In our case, we're going to have a standalone dedicated channel for the Eden Prairie city council meetings and for your government channel that'll be on channel 235. Why would 235 be the right location? Because in CenturyLink's channel lineup, the news and information programming, Fox News, CNN, C-SPAN, Headline News, CNBC, are all located between channel 200 and 250. So we've put you and the other five Southwest cities in the middle of the news and information channels, which we think is the right location, probably more likely, actually, for people to scroll through your programming than they would in the 8,000s. So we really think we've set this up for your city to be maybe the best of both worlds. You get the mosaic approach, plus you get a standalone dedicated channel down in an area where people are more likely to surf and find your programming. Couple more things to point out. We know that Eden Prairie has a relationship with Edina, where they handle certain of your programming and your government programming. We have the agreement that requires a direct fiber connection to Edina to make sure that's connected, as well as a direct connection to this city hall. They're going to provide all your peg channels in both standard definition and high definition if you choose to give it to them in that, which is something that we weren't able to achieve to its fullest extent in the Comcast document. They're going to match the peg fee penny for penny, the same as what Comcast offered. We have the right to increase the Comcast fee during that term. They'll match that when we choose to increase it. So we're keeping the financial burdens on these operators identical, so there'll be no difference in franchise fees, peg fees, or any other burdens. Both of them will be treated identically. They're going to match the free service obligations. They don't want to duplicate service where Comcast already provides it, let's say, to a local school. But we, the city, have the right to tell them, "We're going to disconnect Comcast from that school. Now we want you to serve that school." So we can allocate and try to create a fair burden in terms of the provision of free service to these buildings. Finally, we've included an extra indemnification in the document, over and above the typical indemnification you would see. In the event the city is challenged for the award of this competitive franchise, we want CenturyLink to stand in our shoes, essentially pay for and handle that litigation so you're not in the position of setting new precedent and having to defend that at your cost. As your city manager mentioned, the recommendation of the Southwest Commission was to approve the ordinance. I've also put in your packet, and I'll have to defer to your city manager as to whether we're going to take action tonight or not, but a resolution that sets forth a number of findings of fact. It's my recommendation that when the council's ready to consider approval of this ordinance, that you also adopt that resolution, essentially memorializes what I've described here, how we got here, the process that was undertaken, and I think creates a nice record for the city's action. And with that, your honor, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Grogan, Mr. Aho?
Just maybe more of a comment. I think it's nice that you outlined some of the benefits that the city achieves by granting a franchise. Is there any other benefits that you, you know, I mean, for residents watching this at home or, you know, in the audience, what does the city get when the city grants a franchise to a provider?
Sure. In this case, I think a couple of things are unique. One is CenturyLink already has wires in the city streets, has for decades. So while there's certainly going to be some disruption of the right of way as they continue to build out their fiber and take it deeper into the neighborhoods, that also increases broadband speed. It offers them a competitive choice for cable TV. I think Comcast is a fabulous operator, has been loyal to the city for a number of years. But competition, of course, brings out the best in everyone. And so this will give the residents of Eden Prairie the choice to decide between Comcast, CenturyLink, satellite companies, over-the-top providers on the internet. So those advantages exist, and I think, again, should have the effect of either improving service, bringing down cost, or potentially both.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Two questions for me. Is this internet too or only TV we're talking about?
For purposes of this contract, it's just cable television. They certainly also provide a broadband product and a telephone product. Those aren't regulated in the same way, so we don't have the ability to impose regulations on those, but those are certainly service offerings that both companies make available.
Okay, so they'll be making this available to any CenturyLink customers?
Correct. CenturyLink, of course, and then Comcast has the same option to provide voice, video, and data. But all we grant them as a city is the right to provide cable TV service under this franchise. Our state essentially regulates the telecommunications piece of it. And for all practical purposes, there is not any significant regulation over broadband delivery at this point. It's governed at the federal level, and so far, there's been a fairly significant hands-off approach as that, we used to call it the fledgling industry of broadband, but I think we all realize that's taking a fairly, I think it's here to stay personally.
Do you even call this cable TV anymore? Because it's really not delivered over what you would typically consider, you know, cable. I think when people think cable, you think of coaxial, you know, cable. This is really more channelized video. Isn't that really what, technically, what it should be called, is channelized video?
That's probably a better technical phrase. The reason I refer to it as cable TV is, as is typical, the law and the statutes don't always keep up with where technology is. So what we're granting is what the law requires, which is a, technical phrase is a Title VI cable television franchise under the federal statute. Remember, that was last amended in 1996, so much has changed in that time period.
So if this passes with all of the members of the Southwest Cable Commission, when do you anticipate construction beginning?
So the construction actually, you know, because they're using existing facilities, the day this becomes effective in Eden Prairie, and it's going to become effective in different cities at different times. In other words, Hopkins, Edina, will each have a different effective date based on the date it's approved and various publication requirements. But if we operate on the assumption that mid-February, let's say February 15th, this becomes effective, for argument's sake, that very day, there'll be a number, a significant number, of Eden Prairie residents that will be able to call and schedule and obtain service. There will be further construction, and we hope there'll be plenty of construction to continue to make this available to even more Eden Prairie residents. That's mostly going to be in terms of extending fiber into the neighborhoods, potentially all the way to the homes, but most likely into the neighborhoods to improve the broadband speed, which will then allow customers enough capacity to actually select the video product from the company.
They'll be able to deliver this over DSL then, provided that they have fiber coming close to the area?
Correct. And as a benchmark, although it's not perfect science, 25 meg download. To the extent you have that speed or better, you'll be able to select this service. If you have, you know, unfortunately, if you're in a slower speed area, then those would be areas that we hope CenturyLink will target to improve the speed so that the product can be purchased. And on some of those technical questions, if I'm not reaching the level of detail that you desire, as I've done many times, I encourage you to call this gentleman up to the stand and quiz him a little bit, too.
But it doesn't, but the point is, it doesn't require that fiber be delivered to the actual household or living unit?
It doesn't require it. In many cases, well, in some cases around the metro area, they are, in fact, going fiber to the home. Oftentimes, it's where there's older, often air... aerial plant, where it's more cost-effective to implement fiber directly to the home. So it's varying by jurisdiction, but it doesn't require it. It simply requires that minimum speed that I referenced.
And they advertise a gig of download speed to some homes, and if I had a gig, how fast could I, I watch TV?
Then you would need fiber. To get a gig, you'd need fiber directly to the household.
I would, I would think.
Yeah.
Well, I'm very excited about this, and I like the idea of introducing competition into the market. As you said, we'll end up with better products if we have some competitors. But one of, one of the concerns that I do have is, one of the issues that I've had to deal with in the last few years, and it's one of the biggest frustrations to members of our community, is the constant digging up of our right-of-ways and them not being put back into the kind of condition that they started out in, and not being maintained so that whatever is planted into these right-of-ways actually has an opportunity to grow and fill in, and it's not just weeds. So I hope that we, when, I don't know what kind of interaction we have with CenturyLink or whoever goes into our right-of-way as once they're granted access, but if there's some way that we can keep up on that in some orderly way, and we don't have to wait for complaints from residents, because I know some of them are very irritated by the constant digging and the poor look of some of the areas where the right-of-ways have been accessed.
And Your Honor, the one way we tried to address that issue, because, you know, your city manager actually raised that issue in the Comcast negotiations, says, "Oh, we're ahead of the schedule on that." And he raised that point, and what we've tried to do is not have the cable franchise, whether it's for Comcast or CenturyLink, serve as an exception to the rules that the city wants to put in place that govern all utilities and all right-of-way users. So we've really taken the approach of less is more. The franchise is going to be quite silent on many of those issues, and it's going to drive it straight back to the city code. And what we tell the operators is, you're required now to comply with city code. Of course, you're in control of city code, and as you choose to modify or change that, adopt a new model right-of-way ordinance, they're required as part of their franchise to comply with what's your city code mandates. So in that way, we're not locked in for the next five or 10 years. You can continually modify that as appropriate for the city.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this?
Your Honor, council members, my name's Patrick Haggerty. I'm here on behalf of CenturyLink. A few brief comments. Mr. Grogan's done a great job, I think, of taking most of the comments I was going to bring up, but very excited to be at this point for your potential consideration, bringing competition to the city of Eden Prairie, as well as investment in the infrastructure and expansion of broadband speeds, so on and so forth. I also want to extend some gratitude to the Southwest Suburban Cable Commission, the time of the commission and the city, and the resources put forth in order to get to this point. I very much appreciate it, Mr. Grogan, for sure. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
No questions, but just we're looking forward to having, you know, having another provider in the city and having, having some service that can be very spectacular. So thank you.
Very excited, thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the first reading of an ordinance granting a cable television franchise to CenturyLink.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next public hearing is a vacation of part of the slope easement flying cloud drive MedCom. What, yes?
Um, we didn't close the public.
I know, it's not written here.
I know.
Do we technically need to close out a public hearing?
Okay.
Yes.
Can it be a separate after this motion?
Yes.
I would move then that we close this public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the vacation of slope easement for flying cloud drive MedCom.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. This, this is due to Park Nicolet doing some expansion and construction on their property, and there was an easement that the city has had since, I believe, 1976 that we no longer need. So we're simply asking for the council to vacate this easement that's no longer needed, and then it would allow Park Nicolet to continue to accommodate their addition of their building.
Okay, I, I have a question on that. I remember a few years ago, we were talking to some seniors who were talking about the difficulty of going down that trail by Summit Place and trying to get down and access this healthcare facility. And there's, because of the slope, there was no good way for them to get in, and we were hoping that Park Nicolet would address it and try to devise some way to get walkers into the facility, and I don't think they ever have. Is there any hope in this process to get something taken care of? Yeah, Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. So we have been working with the Parks Department on this issue. Frankly, the biggest obstacle to getting to that building is walkers can't walk along MedCom Boulevard. There's no facilities there. So we've been working with Park Nicolet to ensure that there is some type of facility constructed on the south side to allow them to get in to the parking lot and into their building. And the city's also planning to work on the extension of MedCom Boulevard, which would connect all the way over to Franlo, also having some trail sidewalk facility, so that we do have an environment where people in the condominiums, the apartments, can actually get to Park Nicolet. We see that as a real destination that needs to have those types of access. So we are working on that.
Okay, good, great, thank you. Any other questions? Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue?
Hearing none, I would move to close the public hearing.
We should have waited a little bit longer. I'm sure that somebody may have wanted to speak.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you just close the public hearing?
I just closed the public hearing, yes.
Okay, is there a motion on the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution vacating a part of the slope easement as dedicated on the Torrance document 1208598, dated December 6, 1976, and recorded on February 8, 1977, with the Hennepin County Register of Titles lying over a portion of track day, registered land survey number 1394, Hennepin County of Minnesota.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question on that list? Roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens?
Aye.
The last item really on our agenda tonight is some appointments to the Board of Appeal and Equalization. Mr. Getcha?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. The, the first meeting of the year, you conducted most of your appointments and, and business for the year, but there was another piece of appointment business that we need to make, and that is to appoint members to our Board of Appeal and Equalization. Since 1992, the city has appointed the citizen volunteers that have expertise and knowledge in the real estate market to assist the city with our annual valuations throughout Eden Prairie. That typically involves two meetings, and the work is usually completed in March and April of, of this year. So the action that's requested of you is to appoint these five members to the Board of Appeal and Equalization for their work to be completed between March and the end of May of this year.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to appoint to the Board of Appeal and Equalization Lyndon Mokwes, Annette O'Connor, Todd Walker, Nate Thompson, and, is it Kristin Reel, for the period of March 1, 2016 through May 31, 2016, or until the Board of Appeal and Equalization completes its work.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there any other business to bring before the council?
Uh, the mayor just mentioned, we were commenting that Patricia.
Pittcock.
Pittcock for the first time, and I remember.
I don't remember her ever not being there.
No, that's, she really served well and long in all the years to the city. I just maybe give a call out to Patricia Pittcock.
For all her service.
Thank you for all your years of service, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.